The Commissioners Meeting in order this Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Our first item would be the invocation by Commissioner Harvey and our second is a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Rawls.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today, a day of opportunity to serve our fellow man throughout Putnam County and throughout this state and throughout the world. Father, give us wisdom to handle the business that's at hand today and anything that comes up today, Father, give us that wisdom also. We ask that you bless our meeting, bless all the participants in this trying time. Bless the people who've lost their loved ones during this pandemic and Father, we thank you that you are our hope and our life. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Harvey and thank you Commissioner Rawls. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, different minutes. Is there any additions or corrections?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Pickens?
It was brought to my attention by citizen, concerned citizen, that there are two typos. On the title page, it should be August 6, 2019, and it's August 6, 2020. And then on page 12, paragraph 6, it should be native plant rather than native plant. We make those adjustments.
Thank you Commissioner Pickens. Did you get that Sarah? Okay, thank you. Is there any more additions or corrections? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval as the minutes have stated corrected.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. The, do we have any public comment this morning or any emails that were sent in for the BOCC meeting Laura?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move past public comment to presentations. Ms. Young?
Good morning Commissioners. I'm here with your May Putnam County projects updates. Just to reiterate, the project update presentation is meant to provide the Commission and the public an update on a handful of projects which are of most interest to the Commission or citizens. The project list is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by all county departments. If there is a particular question on a project, please feel free to reach out to me and I will provide the additional information. The project list has been updated with items in purple, bold and underlined font. Those are your changes from month to month. It will be posted on the website and you also receive an email to all the Commissioners. We'll begin with projects underway by administration. The strategic plan, the report from the two-day planning workshop has been disseminated. The mission, vision, value statements have been established. The employee survey results have been disseminated and reviewed. Strategic operational plans and goal metrics are being developed for each of the 14 priority objectives identified by the BOCC at that December two-day planning workshop. The census as of May 22, Putnam County has a 47.20% response rate. The state average is 57.40. The national average response rate is 59.90%. Animal control facility, the BOCC is set to discuss the conceptual floor plan at the June workshop as provided by Commissioner Rawls. The library, the Melrose Library Association has been working with us to make an expansion to the Melrose Library. Construction documents have been drafted and we will meet with the Melrose Library Association for a final review prior to those bids for construction being ready. We expect to be ready this summer, June or July, to go out to bid. The Port Authority slash the Parks and Recreation Department, project play in the splash pad. The project is complete. We are awaiting a ribbon cutting coordination with the Rotary of Palatka who was a major donor. The splash pad fencing landscape and the restrooms have been refurbished and upgraded. Parks and Recreation Department has the Georgetown Park Project underway. The pavilion playground and picnic tables installation are complete. We're exploring the option of a boat ramp location. Public Works has mowed the area. Mr. Bernstein and Mr. Gerard are working to attempt to survey and delineate wetlands. They are still in the process of working on this survey and delineation. Parks and Recreation Department is assisting with the Flora Home Park Historic Building Restoration and the Flora Home Historic Association has submitted a request for a demo permit. The Planning Department has the comprehensive plan update going. They have finalized, or finalization of the background data and analysis for all nine elements of the plan is underway. This will include the population project for the planning horizon of 2035. In the process of drafting the red line version of the future land reuse, conservation, transportation and recreation open space elements are working on setting a meeting with the agricultural interests in the next two weeks. This will be a virtual meeting. They have started identifying proposed changes to the future land use map and they're still waiting to see if the governor signs the legislation requiring for a new property rights element. The Planning Department also has the Citizen Serve online permitting project going on. They have held their kickoff meeting with Citizen Serve. The contract has been executed and implementation is underway. Public Works has the County Road 207A Bridge over Dog Branch Creek project. The bridge work has been completed. The road work on the approaches is underway and the project is on schedule to be completed by or before July of 2020. Public Works has the Dirt to Pave 2019 underway. All the roads associated with this have been paved with the exception of three. The remaining three to be completed are Gaskin, Ballard and Julia. The total project is on schedule to be completed by July of 2020. Public Works has the Main Street Sidewalk Construction and Crescent City project going. The notice to proceed was issued on April 20th and construction is underway. There's an estimated completion date of October of 2020. Public Works has the Fort Gates Ferry landing underway. Travis Roberts is leading the way and the FDPEP permit was revised successfully. Mr. Roberts has spoken with an engineering firm and an individual who's willing to do the load calculations, which are the remaining item needed for a total of $5,000 according to Mr. Roberts. It's expected to take approximately 30 days to complete that work and the engineering, engineer is preparing a proposal for the work to be completed, to be submitted to the county. Public Works has the Ashley Lake Project going. Phase one has been completed. Phase two has an estimated completion date of August of 2020. Public Works has a Barden Bridge Project going on. The design process is underway. Design is expected to be completed by June 17 of 2020. Public Works is working to get GIS mapping of their mowing equipment. They're piloting the device and working through the glitches at this time. Once the system is operational, IT and Public Works estimates it'll take a 45-day implementation timeframe to be fully integrated. Public Works has the Lake Susan Road Phase Two Project underway. The design is underway. Construction is scheduled to begin in December of 2020. Project completion date is estimated to be June of 2022. Public Works has the St. John's Avenue resurfacing Palm Avenue to the CSX Crossing at the Placa Fire Department. Design is underway. Thirty percent design plans review is expected to be on June 29 of 2020. Public Works has the road resurfacing project for 2020 underway. Project was awarded at the April 14, 2020 BOCC meeting. Contracts with JM, J&amp;M, PNS and Halifax are complete and construction is underway. We are awaiting the contract to be returned for Duval asphalt. Public Works has the East Palatka Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion underway. Expansion was completed, which involves the installation of the list station at Paradise Point. The septic-to-sewer individual tie-ins are underway and is scheduled to be completed by October of 2020. Public Works has the County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The RFQ was issued on May 15 and responses are due on June 12. The intent to recommend rank order is scheduled to go before the Board at July 28. Public Works has the Dirt to Pave 2020 Project. Survey work is in progress. Once completed, we'll be ready to issue a solicitation. Public Works is working on the County Road 315 Crosswalk. Quotes are being sought to complete the work. Public Works has the East Palatka Drainage and Flooding Mitigation Project. The bid package is in process. Work is scheduled to be completed by December 31 of 2021. Public Works has the St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement, State Road 19 to County Road 309C. Design is in process and scheduled to be completed by October 7 of 2021. Public Works has the St. John's Avenue Bike Trail. The bid solicitation was issued on May 20th, is expected to bring an intent to award to the BOCC on July 14th and the project completion has an estimated date of December 1 of 2020. Public Works has the Road Restriping and Pavement Marking Project. The bid was issued May 15th. Bids are due June 12th. The intent is to bring to the BOCC on June 23 for award and work is estimated to be completed by August 17 of 2020. Sanitation has the cell for a construction project underway. Contract for services for the design consultant has been executed and design work is in progress. Expected to start construction in the third quarter of 2020 and construction is estimated to take about six months to complete. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Young for that update. Are there any questions at this time about the update to Ms. Young? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anybody, any Commissioners wishing to pull items from the consent agenda? Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item C.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls? Are you muted Commissioner? Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Commissioner Goddard? Hang on a second sir, I got, there you go Commissioner Goddard.
I have none.
Okay, good deal, I have none. Commissioner Pickens, first the chair will entertain a motion to pass a consent agenda with the exception of item C and including the addendum item F.
I move for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Goddard and a second by Commissioner Harvey to pass a consent agenda with the, with the addendum item F and excluding item C. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Pickens, item C.
Thank you, Turner. I just, after speaking with Secretary Suggs and Matt, I think this item wasn't really supposed to be on the consent agenda maybe for a separate item and I'd like to ask Matt Reynolds to go over this and explain this particular item.
Yes, sir Commissioners. We received this request from a homeowner that had received a CDVG housing rehabilitation grant. I also attached a copy of a prior policy that was adopted by the Board back in 2004. This homeowner approached staff about asking if the county would be willing to subordinate our CDVG lien that we place on homes that we do housing rehabilitation for, much like the ship program. Anybody that's a recipient of these housing grants, they have to remain in the house. It has to be their primary residence and they have to stay there for at least five years and then the grant expires and, and we remove the lien. This individual's grant expires in September of 2021. However, they approached the county because they said they were in dire need of purchasing a vehicle and they are wanting to refinance their first and second mortgage, which is ahead of our mortgage, which would be third in line. And they're wanting to refinance both of those mortgages and take money out in order to purchase a vehicle. And in that policy that I attached, it, one of the items is very clear and it's in bold letters that says, the county will not allow homeowners to refinance and take equity out for any purpose. So as staff, we felt like we did not have the authority to grant that and this individual requested that this come to the Board and so we are bringing it to the Board for the Board to give us direction, either yea or nay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Rawls?
So Matt, if there, there, there are other CDVG grants that have been awarded in the past and probably some in the future, this would really require, I would imagine, a change in our, our intent. Would that not be correct?
Yes, by allowing it, it would, it would set a precedent because this is not something that we typically do for ship grantees, you know, and that's what staff tells them is, you know, if they can wait out the grant, for example, if, if this, this homeowner can wait until next September, the grant will, will disappear, or that lien will disappear. Yep.
So, um, I, I, you know, personally, I'm not sure if it's anybody's best interest to refinance a home to buy a vehicle obviously, but I think the intent is to get people into homes, tie them to the community and keep them bound to the community for that period of time. So I personally would, would not be in favor of approving this on a, on a one-time basis. I wouldn't mind looking at it across the board for everybody, but I think that would really require input from staff and legal.
There, there are criteria on, on that sheet that I attached to this agenda item. The Board did adopt this policy and if you read through that policy, there are some instances where if, if people approach the county in order to refinance, there are things that they have to meet and things that we review just to make sure that the refinancing is really to put them in a better financial position. Whether it's a lower interest rate, they can't pay more than 2% in, in fees in order to refinance. The decrease in interest rate on the refinance has to be more than, I believe it's 1%. Generally things like that and, and we will allow people to refinance and we will subordinate our lien to the new mortgage. But from what it appears, that this doesn't meet that criteria.
Raise your hand whoever it was that called out.
Larry.
Commissioner Harvey, yes sir.
Thank you. You know, I feel a way, when I want to say thank you Commissioner Pickens for pulling this item because I had questions about it also. And Commissioner Rawls, you're exactly right. And Matt, if we're going to put somebody, if we're going to do these loans or these grants to get them in a home, that's what that's designed for. But I don't feel like, and I'm with Commissioner Rawls, that we possibly should not put them in a worse financial position. We need to put them in a better financial, but the whole idea was to get them into a home and that was the bottom line. So this Commissioner is not in favor of that and I just wanted to go on record.
Thank you Commissioner Harvey. I, I'm going to join with Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Harvey in saying that I don't think I can go along with this with, on one case basis. I think we'd have to look at the, at the complete policy or the complete information that's been put in place for years and that, that is what was signed up for originally and I think we have to, to do that. And it says the borrower cannot receive or, or one of the, the criterias that the borrower can, does not receive any cash out for any purpose. So I think that would be in direct violation of this policy and while we may or may not have the authority to overturn it here today, I think this is probably going to have to go toward here, before hearings and what have you, before we actually just change the policy or, or, or move away from that policy. So I have to go along with that. Commissioner Goddard, did you have something?
I do. I don't think we need to be moving from our policy. Our policy was, has been in place a long time and it does protect the county, so I, I, I'm with the rest. I, I don't think we need to change the policy.
Thank you Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Pickens, did you have something to add sir?
I'm in agreement there. I mean, I'm not opposed to looking at it at a later date, if, if that's something that would be beneficial, but as Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Harvey put it, is this program's designed to get people into homes and, and that's, that's what it's doing. So, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we deny the request of item C pertaining to, it doesn't follow the county's policy.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pickens and a second by Commissioner Harvey. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries unanimously. With that, we're going to try to let Jacob, is the Mr. Winans in the, in the waiting room? Is that the guy, the young man for the code case? I'm going to let him in and see if that's him.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams is.
Mr. Winans, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Are you here for the codes case this morning?
For the...
213 Port Comfort Road Code Case?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I had let you in the room. We had just started and we're going to have a presentation by the codes officials and, and then we'll let you talk if you want to at that time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
These, I'm presenting Code Case 2010-532. The address is 213 Port Comfort Drive. Property owner's name is Clarence Winans. The violation is a disrepaired shed. The original amount that's owed is $19,729 and the total cost of enforcement action was $1,940. That's the lien reduction amount. The case was opened for a structurally unsound shed. The BOCC had approved abatement action in April of 2013. The property owner took the shed down in April of 2013 and became compliant. Fines were stopped as of April 2, April 14, 2013. The property owner has passed away in October 2019 and the son Evan Winans has now inherited the property and is trying to sell it, so he's requesting a fine.
Is that it, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Evan Winans, would you like to comment, sir?
Yes, sir. My father passed away in October of last year and in doing so, I took over his house. I'm his only, only remaining relative. And as I went through the process of cleaning out the house and getting it ready to sell and speaking with the title company, I found out about this lien. I had no... I had no prior knowledge of it until then, and then immediately tried to get in touch with code enforcement to see what needed to be done. I've spoken with a lady by the name of Ms. Mitra and spoken with Mr. Thomas, and both have been extremely helpful to this point to kind of navigate me down this road to see how I can work with you guys on getting this fixed so that I may be able to move on and sell my late father's house and continue to do what I need to do for my family, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rawls.
Mr. Winans, I'm sorry for your loss. In the past, we have allowed the reduction, further reduction by the administrative monthly cost. In this case, it would be two hundred and forty dollars, which would bring the total down to seventeen hundred dollars. If a motion's in order, I would make a motion that we further reduce down to one thousand seven hundred dollars by dropping the administrative monthly fees.
We have a motion.
I can second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rawls and a second by Commissioner Goddard. Under discussion, Mr. Moore, I noticed here, I know this was before you were here, but I noticed that we had eighteen inspections and postings. What were the dates of some of those? Were they all previous to the thirteen time, or were they after that, or when were the when were those inspections?
Previous to the two thousand and thirteen, sorry, yes, sir.
So we did eighteen inspections to see if the guy had torn down his shed yet?
Yes, sir.
What was in the shed, dynamite?
Commissioner, we can't speak to what was in the shed. We're just going off the property, you know, the property record case history on inspections required to get the case in compliance.
Please excuse me being a smart aleck, Mr. Sioffi.
Yes, sir.
It just seemed like, just seemed like an abundance of of inspections, and I know they weren't, neither one of you were here when that was done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey.
I was knocked offline, so I was out of pocket for the last couple of minutes. What happened just now?
Basically, the codes department did the the presentation on the codes case, and Commissioner Rawls, seconded by Commissioner Goddard, made a motion to reduce the fine, the of the amount of the administrative monthly fee to seventeen hundred dollars even, if I believe. Was that correct, Mr. Rawls?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Mr. Winans, if he can answer it. He might not be able to, but did you know that your father had a lien placed on this, or did he just not care? Or what was the...
I I did not know he had a lien placed on the property. We never discussed the lien. I know he said back, this is years ago, that the neighbor of his was upset about the the type, the shed and the the condition the shed was in. He has a friend there in town, a gentleman by Ron Moore, who has Ron Moore's Well Drilling, who they went out, were able to disassemble the shed for my dad. At the time, my dad living up in South Carolina, and as my dad moved back down here, the shed was disassembled and taken off property, and then my dad became very sick. My dad had cirrhosis of the liver and a few other elements, leukemia being one of them, and as soon as he got back to Florida, I ended up becoming his caretaker, and his life went down a different road pretty fast after that. And so he stayed a lot at his house, but he stayed a lot with me as well, but never was discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment after we vote, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. You want to vote first and then make your comment, Commissioner?
I would love to, yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Harvey, you had another comment?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. I talked to Mr. Suggs about this, and I talked to the codes about it briefly the other day. I just wonder how many of these are out there that we have liens on and that we couldn't say today, if you came in the next couple of months and cleaned this up, there might be more people like Mr. Winans out there that inherited property that do not know that there's a lien on the property. And I know this, I don't want to say this is kind of trite, but it's it's a lot of money, but we don't need this to drag on and drag on. So somewhere, the county's got to have a list of properties that we've got liens on, and maybe we can do some type of amnesty program where if you come in, we'll get these things cleaned up for you. Because the bottom line is, we want our money, we want the codes cases done away with, we don't need to carry them on the books for forever, and people don't need to suffer. Maybe this gentleman got old and forgot that he even had a lien placed on the property. I don't know, but it's kind of worrisome to me, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Mr. Sioffi was, I realize about a year or a year, maybe a little over a year ago, we had a a shelf in the in the codes office that had, I don't know, twenty, thirty cases on it that we were going to look at over a period of time, and then we, Mr. Irkman, went to the left the codes and went into the building department as an inspector, and we brought Mitra on board. Do you know, and then now Mitra's talking about leaving, do you know where we are on that shelf of thirty or whatever it was, where all those cases?
Sir, I don't have a number for you, but I know we have been whittling it down and code liens, we've been working adamantly at you guys' suggestions, so we, the people, everybody that has a lien in the county on their property is well-noticed, had due process. As the years go on, they might forget about it, but but we do send notices all the time, making them aware, but I can look in to see how many of that that shelf of forty we got left and let you know, but those are, they go from anywhere from abatements to, you know, code liens, there's all kinds of, they're not just all the same circumstance.
Yes, sir, I understand, and I understand the difficulty of a lot of them, and that's why they're there, but when when we do get a chance, maybe we could go back to looking at them a little bit, and I know you're whittling on them, but look at them a little more and and see if we can't get as many of them cleared up as we can. A lot of them were abatement issues, and you didn't have abatement funds, but this year, there are some abatement funds available in the department, and I think we decided to use the money from the from the surplus land sales or from the land sales that the county did and take that money and put it back towards this program also, I believe is what we voted to do. And so if you could take another look at that when you get a chance, and like, I know you've been having people come and go in codes, but if just, if you could maybe take a look at that in the next month or so and give us a report on where we are?
Yes, sir, will do.
Thank you, Mr. Sioffi, and thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, sir.
And with that, we're going to to move out of code enforcement, and I'm going to ask the clerk of court, does he have any comments this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give you an update on the court system moving forward with reestablishing more normal operations. Anticipated that the first of June that we would begin that process. However, last week, the Supreme Court issued an order which talks about a four-phase process that will probably take a couple of months to move through. So this afternoon, Judge Oatry and Judge McGillan have set a Zoom meeting. I believe they shared that Zoom meeting invite with Administrator Suggs. I did inform them that that was also the time of your workshop, but they are going to begin to look at how they work with all the partners in the pandemic arena to make sure that the citizens and the public is protected, along with the judges and staff. And so they will be moving forward with that over the next couple of weeks to begin to implement that. I mention that to you because as part of the two thousand amendment that changed the court system from a county-operated court systems to a state-operated court system, one of the components says that the county is still responsible for all court facilities, including technology. So there may be some retrofits of courtrooms or hallways that need to take place based on the order that was established or set by the Supreme Court, which would ultimately mean that that would be the county's responsibility. I will commit to you to work with you and keep Administrator Suggs and your staff informed as much as I know of what those are, and hopefully we can minimize any cost for renovations. It's deemed that our courthouse, our new courthouse, which was built in nineteen oh six, has probably the most difficult patterns of movement with folks, because it was never anticipated that you would keep folks apart. So we will continue to have to work with these issues to try to make sure that the public and staff and judges and everyone is safe as we continue to open up more of the court system for the citizens of Putnam County. Let me also say that the clerk of courts office has been open this whole time. Our customer service center has been available with some restrictions on how you interact with them, but also to mention that, for the most part, activity that you need with the clerk's office or the court through the clerk's office is available through some type of technology. So we've been fortunate that over the past ten years that we've been implementing those improvements to that and providing online access. So, Mr. Chairman, that is my report, but I would like to make sure that I ask Ms. Frank if she has any comments as our finance director.
Okay, she's shaking her head no, Tim, so I guess that's good enough. Thank you, Ms. Frank, and thank you, Tim, for your comments this morning. We're going to move from that. We had a, let me just make sure, Sarah, we voted on the last motion to reduce, didn't we? Okay, Mr. Commando, we voted on that motion. You must have had a little tick in your Zoom call there, so I missed it, so, but we...
I have a public comment.
Okay, when was the public com, when did the public comment arrive, Laura?
Just a few minutes ago.
Okay, what is it, what is it concerning?
Appointments.
Okay, and it's a public comment and not a request for an appointment?
Correct. It's a question regarding appointments.
Okay, would would this be the proper time and venue, Colonel Commando?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Laura, please read the email.
Okay, it is from Yvette Reyes, PO Box two five three, Boswick, Florida, three two zero zero seven. She says, "Is there any deviation for filling the animal services advisory position in District Two to allow anyone from another district to be nominated?"
I don't know, I don't know, there's some committees can point across district lines and some committees can't. I'll have to get Mr. Reynolds to look into that, if you would, Matt, please, and see if this is a committee that that the district appointments need to live in the district. I know some do and some don't. So for the animal services committee, could you look into that, please, sir? Okay, and we'll look into that, and maybe you could get back with Ms. Reyes on that, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any more comments, Ms. Parsons?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there any appointments today, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls?
Sam Carr has agreed to continue with the waterways and trails.
Good.
Okay, good deal. Commissioner Goddard?
Yes, I want to point Kenny Schween to the planning commission.
Okay, is that a district or a at-large?
No, it's not.
It's a district, okay, so good. Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Has he filled out a a a application?
No, not yet.
Okay, well, as part of this, he'll have to fill out an application and turn it in before it becomes valid. I think that is the rule, is not, commissioners?
Okay, well, then we'll we'll take care of it on the next meeting also.
Well, you can do it now, I believe, as long as you just get him to do it, but that's up to you.
Oh, yeah, I'll get him to do it.
Okay, so what your what your appointment is, is you're going to appoint him per receipt of his application, is that it, sir?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
See, I'm going to unmute you, Commissioner, and let you say it again. You're muted, and I can unmute you.
I have an issue. Okay, I have none, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. I'm going to mute you back, sir, just because of the feedback in the room, all right? Thank you. I have none, no, none today, but I will have one at the next meeting for the fair board. The county administrator comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comments this morning. We, as you know, we're just continuing to do the things that we need to do to be consistent here with open up services as best we can, and and I'll wait, and if there's any comments that you'd like to make later, I'll I'll assist with those if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Suggs. The county attorney, Rick Commando?
Good morning, gentlemen. I have no comments this morning, thank you.
Thank you, Rich, we appreciate you, buddy. Commissioner comments and requests, I'm going to start this morning with Commissioner Harvey, and the reason being is he is asked to make a presentation, so it looks like you're going to have to unmute it, Larry, I can't get, there you go. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, fellow board members. I have been briefing you in the past few meetings about this CARES Act money and the one point two seven five billion dollars still parked in Tallahassee, and advised you at the last meeting that the plane looked like it was coming in for a landing. As of Friday, my understanding, last Friday, it's not a matter of if the money's going to come, it's when the money's going to come. Our our allotment of the one point two seven five billion, we'll be sharing that with counties, the fifty-five counties that did not receive federal allotment and four hundred and eleven municipalities. We don't know what that number is yet, but it looks like it's going to probably follow the same guidelines as the population that they did when they divvied up the money to begin with. It should have the same guidelines to it. I would encourage you, and I've sent Mr. Suggs a proposed email last night, Mr. Smith has that email, and we can get it to you at this time or another time, but we need to pass a resolution supporting FAC and Florida League of Cities, along with our small county coalition, and supporting their efforts and joining them and sending a resolution to the governor, asking for him to release that money, and then we need to send a letter from the chairman, basically stating that the county commission endorses that and supports that request. I would ask you that inside that letter, if we can take a moment and talk about, or we don't have to today, we can do it anytime, but we need to have a tentative plan, and I've talked to Mr. Smith about that, he is our comptroller, and he's, he has been working with Susan and his staff, and I know he's still on, so, Mr. Smith, may I, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, may I ask Mr. Smith to kind of step in for a second and talk to him, talk to y'all about what we talked about?
Mr. Smith, are you still with us? I think he may be with us in space only, he may have walked in the other room or something, Commissioner.
That's okay. The bottom line, basic, is we've got to get this, we don't have to, but we need to support our association in getting this resolution and a support letter, and let the governor know that we're working on a tentative plan. We want to do that sooner than later, because we do, we do not want to fall short when that money comes in and we don't have a plan in action ready to move, and it could be to cover the twenty-five percent that FEMA is not covering. And it could be to cover the twenty-five percent that FEMA is not covering. It could be uh to cover any future P P Es that need to be done. It could be for our businesses to receive some money if they use it for COVID-related expenses. There's all kinds of things, but that's where uh the treasury has listed what can be spent on. And I believe that's where Mr. Smith would be able to lend his expertise in figuring out how to get through that that channel.
Okay, good deal. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Um, has our our attorney seen this at this time? Uh, have you seen this letter yet, this resolution, Rich? Rich, can you hear me? Rich? Are you with us?
Yep, sorry, it was, Rich and I was losing losing sound and uh video for a second.
Sorry, um, did you, have you had a chance to review this uh resolution?
I I haven't reviewed it yet. I've seen a lot of stuff coming through on the Association of County Attorneys, but as to whether or not a resolution is needed or whether or not a resolute or the finance department's able to administer those funds, uh, still kind of being debated among the attorneys through the state.
Okay, well, I uh Commissioner Harvey, if you would make, if you would uh make the motion to uh to do this uh with the uh with after the attorney looks at it and make sure that he's okay with it, uh, I I'm not very comfortable signing resolutions that the attorney hadn't at least read.
How about we uh, would you like to talk about it at our transportation meeting today? And maybe that would give Mr. Commander time to look at that?
That would be just fine, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, would you have time between now and two o'clock meeting this afternoon, uh, Mr. Commando, to to read this resolution and see if there's anything in there that gives you heartburn?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Was that all you had for today, Commissioner Harvey? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, next, we'll move to Commissioner Rawls.
Um, so I've been working with uh an idea on what we can do to help help um our, not just our staff, but other other folks that are looking to get into permanent housing. Um, we have a lot of people that rent in Putnam County. Uh, I spoke with um Phil Leary the other day and he assured me and um that the USDA has increased their staffing. There's been issues in the past with trying to get USDA rural development mortgages pushed through. Um, so they're, they now have a staff of three. I think they're looking for another one. I spoke with their with their director, Stephanie Hodges, and they have money to lend. Um, I'm hoping that we can maybe in the future put together a uh or talk about this on a workshop. Um, I'm hoping to attend a meeting next week in Ocala uh to get some more details on this, but I think there's an opportunity for uh not only our staff, but sheriff's department, um, hospital, uh, schools, anybody that's looking to um buy, build a house in Putnam County. A rural development mortgage program is is uh has has very lenient qualification standards. Beacon score of six forty, low closing costs. They loan a hundred percent loan to value, so um, I'd like, I'd like to see us uh get this uh as a topic of discussion to see what we can do as a community or as a county to um get this word out. Uh, it's not just our staff, but other folks in the community. Now, otherwise, it feels like things you're starting to um get, people are starting to get back to work. You know, so the the businesses are um are slow opening, especially the restaurants, but it's starting to starting to feel a bit better. You know, I still have a lot of concern with the folks that are in the service industry that are not able to bring back their staff. Um, they still have a lot of people laid off or working um less than full-time, so uh my heart goes out to them and I really wish there was more we could do to get this thing opened up sooner than later.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Commissioner Rawls, has has they identified any private loaners, lenders on in Putnam County that could assist the S B A in this situation?
No, this this is rural development mortgages. Uh, this is home mortgages and it the USDA is the mortgage company. Their their interest rate rounds is two point seven five percent, but they can buy it down to as low as one percent, which um if if you've got a family um of of three making thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, um, I I think it actually goes to the forty-two thousand for a family of four. Um, I'll have I'll have the hard numbers when we meet next week, which we're trying to get a meeting set up, but uh I I think this is something, you know, coming out of this especially, uh, of this um uh coronavirus and every the pandemic that it's uh created and the problems that it's created, I think this would be a uh an opportunity for folks that are looking to uh get into stable, full-time housing. And I'm I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with the uh uh Housing Authority Director, because there are a lot of folks that live in public housing that could afford a mortgage that that are paying more than uh what they would pay for a mortgage. It's it's amazing when you start looking at what two point seven five percent does on mortgage money and how much of a mortgage you can actually afford. So I I just just kind of give you a preemptive conversation. Maybe we can have a a bigger conversation about this in a few weeks.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes, uh. I am, I'm I'm so impressed with some of the people in Putnam County that have gone through these food drives and the volunteering and and it was just an enjoyment to watch how much these people enjoyed helping the community. But on top of that is also the people who are helping the old, the elders and the ones that uh will not be leaving their homes, uh, very fearful to go out, that they are going and getting their whatever they need, their groceries or whatever, bringing them to their house and putting it outside so that they can come get it. It just makes you feel good for our community, how great it is. And on top of that, I've gotten the opportunity to go out and see a lot. You know me, I like to travel around. And uh especially out at Rodman, I was surprised they're not on top of each other, but there were a lot of people enjoying the everything else down along the river. Uh, the boats that were out there again, I know that there was some that weren't social distancing, but for the most part, people were just enjoying time with their family, out fishing, out uh uh doing some skiing, actually pulling the uh rafts behind there uh and enjoying the fishing. It's it's good to see, and you know me, I always say, go out and see how beautiful Putnam County is. Uh, with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. Um, just wanna say a little different Memorial Day yesterday without you know, the parade and then the ceremony. I understand there was a modified ceremony at the Burt Hodge Lodge, which I was unable to attend, but still show my appreciation and gratitude for all the men and women who lost their lives in in the service protecting our freedoms and uh for all the men and women that are serving protecting our freedoms today. The second thing I I want to say is I just want to recognize Terry Suggs. Uh, when Terry came on board, he pretty much said he would be available for his commissioners and staff and really the citizens of Putnam County twenty-four seven. Well, uh, he proved that yesterday afternoon. I got a call uh from a citizen that a tree had fallen down and was blocking half of Old Seventeen, south of Crescent City. And so I reached out to Terry and within uh within ten minutes, he was on the phone with me and I want to recognize Mike Troxel. He was involved in this, so uh and Public Works for taking care of that. It could have been a real dangerous situation. And uh so I just want to recognize Terry and say thank you and for Public Works uh for a great job, you know, uh during a holiday, so, and a great job you do every day, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something?
Commissioner Rawls?
Commissioner Pickens, that's the advantage of having all the equipment in District One.
Okay, I will. I'm gonna go ahead and fess up, guys. All five mowing tractors are in District One at the Georgetown Park, as I saw them. Anyway, so they're down there, but uh, thank you.
That was funny, because while I was on mute, I said the exact same thing to Administrator Suggs here in the room, so uh okay, uh, I guess we'd be remiss today if we didn't talk some about our COVID that's going on in Putnam County. Uh, as everybody on this call well knows, we're still in full phase one. Uh, the governor put us in a modified phase one and then moved us to a full phase one, and that's why we're still having Zoom meetings. At such time as we move into phase two, when the governor moves us in, whenever that may be, hopefully this week, but whenever that may be, then uh if he doesn't modify the CDC regulations like he did when he put us into modified phase one to start with, then we'll probably start having meetings at that time. Uh, I'm talking about meetings not on Zoom. So the, as long as we can have the fifty or the si- the uh phase two guidelines at this point call for uh groups of fifty, but uh with moderate social distancing, I believe, is what it says, so. Anyhow, I've had some people reach out to me about this, uh, why, well, why are we not having normal meetings? And the reason we're not is because phase one uh that we're currently in calls for uh groups of ten or less with uh social distancing. So uh that was an update and uh I think Administrator Suggs has a further update on the COVID situation, Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Uh, just want to say thank you uh to uh to all of those that assisted in getting the vacation rental uh approval uh from Tallahassee this week. You know, that came out last Friday and on Tuesday, we had submitted the information to Tallahassee. And I think it was Fri- by Friday, we had the approval letter back uh to go ahead and get those properties back uh in use, which was uh very helpful for a lot of our folks in Putnam County. Uh, it's unfortunate we had to do it right there at the last minute for uh Memorial Day, but uh it it's done and I think it's the right thing. Uh, secondly, we also have uh modified our schedule for the five libraries in Putnam County. We began opening those up to a soft opening on Tuesday. Uh, we are running from uh ten to six Tuesday through Saturday. Uh, we've made some modifications within the uh the facilities themselves to try to be vigilant and following the CDC guidelines as well as the uh State Health Department. Uh, Ms. Julianne Young and and Laura Parker, myself, went to the main library and and as they were installing the uh uh plexiglass at the circulation desk and and putty tape on the floor to show where six feet uh uh our guidelines were for uh for uh checking out books, and I think it's going real well. Uh, haven't heard uh of any concerns around the uh county about that uh other than a few internal. Uh, reached out to each one of our municipalities to uh let them know that this was coming and they were uh they were fine with it, so uh once again, uh, Mr. Chairman, as uh as you know, being in the uh E O C uh of day-to-day as you are, uh, things are starting to uh move in the right direction, I think, for Putnam County. I think our epidemiologists and our our command staff out there at D O C as well as our Board of County Commissioners and staff are making some very uh conscious decisions on how to uh follow the governor's uh executive orders and and get us uh back into some sense of uh uh operational uh day-to-day operations here, so uh thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Suggs. Um, one thing that uh that I would like to say before we adjourn the meeting is uh being out of the E O C as much as I have, I um, I've got to to firsthand see the planning and I asked them the other day what we would do if we had a hurricane that with the the COVID situation. And believe it or not, like I said a few weeks ago, our planners in Putnam County are ahead of the curve. They're already starting to think about what they can do to uh under situations further down the road, and they had already started planning. When uh when we started this and I went on conference calls on uh Monday afternoon with the chairmans of the board, chairmans and chairpersons of the board from the surrounding counties, we were way ahead of the game. Um, Terry, are you on mute? Uh, we were way ahead of the game and because of our planners and and them looking forward, looking further into the future than others and and I'm telling you, they've already started looking at that, and for that, I applaud them and uh and tell you that that uh we're very fortunate to have somebody with that ability that's working with us at the county. Uh, that's both the Health Department and our E O C personnel is doing a fine job. And if there's nothing else to come before the board today, this meeting is, yes?
I just wanted to let you know, I did look at that resolution and I have no concerns for Commissioner Harvey's CARE CARES resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, would you make a motion that we pass that resolution at this point, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rich. Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pass that resolution twenty twenty dash, I don't have the number for it, but it's the CARE Act resolution in support of the Florida Association of Counties and Florida League of Cities Small County Coalition to uh to the governor of Florida in support of that CARES Act money.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls that uh that we pass a resolution that was stated in the the addendum in the packet. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, along those lines, we do need to approve um the letter of support from the board with your chairman's signature on it. If that be so, the boards will.
Okay, is that a motion?
I make a motion that we pass a letter of support, uh, letting the governor know that we support the efforts and also that we are going to be working on a tentative plan and you'll be able to sign that letter.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Is there any any further business to come before the board this morning?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smith is back. Um, does he want to make a comment on this?
I uh or no, Commissioner Pickens, I think what we need to do, in my meager opinion, is that we need to wait until we see what's gonna happen with it and then we can hold a workshop on what to do with it at that time.
Okay.
I think would be the best way to do it. So
Mr. Chairman, I concur with that. I would say that if possibly, if you have some ideas, maybe we can shoot it to Mr. Smith and uh he can look at it and start devising a plan up, so we'll be ready to go when that time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. I appreciate that. Is there any further business to come before the board this morning? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
We're back at two o'clock, correct?